Very good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, February 23rd, 2015. It's my honor to call the City of Burnsville Planning Commission regular meeting to order. Commissioners, welcome.
Welcome, Chair.
Staff, welcome. To our viewing and listening audience, we welcome you. Thank you for tuning us in. Our first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. But before we adopt the agenda, we'd just like to let you know what's on the agenda. Item one, adoption. Item two, approval of the minutes of the February 9, 2015 meeting. Item three, public hearing. Application for I-Metro Property Edina LLC for a conditional use permit to install a cellular antenna on a light pole located within the parking lot of Town &amp; Country Shopping Center at 1901 Cliff Road. Item four, it's another public hearing. Application for Dakota Partnership for a conditional use permit and variance to remodel an existing building and the site for a freestanding Subway restaurant with a drive-through at 2900 Cliff Road East. Item five, another public hearing. Application for First Industrial LP for preliminary and final plat of a one-lot industrial subdivision of First Industrial Addition and the conditional use permit to allow retail sales in excess of 1,000 square feet at 2300 West Highway 13. Item six is update and then adjournment. Commissioners, any change to the agenda?
None from me, Chair.
Staff? Seeing none, I hear a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Corey.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passed on a 4-0 vote. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the February 9, 2015 meeting. Any corrections?
None.
Staff? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bradrick. Seconded by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passed on a 4-0 vote. Item three, our first public hearing tonight. Application for I-Metro Property Edina LLC for a conditional use permit to install a cellular antenna on a light pole located within the parking lot of Town &amp; Country Shopping Center located at 1901 Cliff Road. Mr. Slaney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, as you indicated, this is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. The subject site is Town &amp; Country Shopping Center. The shopping center itself is zoned B3 PUD. The surrounding parcels are a mix of high-density residential as well as other commercial sites. There are currently, I'll use the image on the left to start with, there are currently four light poles indicated in these areas that are over 40 feet tall. They've been there for a significant number of years. They do illuminate the larger areas of this parking lot. Verizon through Buell Consulting is requesting a conditional use permit to install cellular equipment within the shopping center. The proposal would be to remove all four of these larger towers, excuse me, all four of these larger poles, and the farthest pole to the north, closest to Cliff Road, would be installed with a new light pole, and then on top of that would be the cellular equipment. The parking lot lights would be mounted at a height of 24 feet with then additional cell equipment on top of that. The cell equipment would cap out at 33 feet, and I will get to those images in just one second. So here you can see the shaded parking stall, and this is Cliff Road. This is the northerly entrance into the shopping center. The red line is indicating utilities underground. There's an existing transformer on-site. The equipment cabinet would be located in this area. This is green space just north of Jimmy John's, which is right here. And then this line indicates fiber that would be connected also underground. Here's an image of the existing pole. You can see, here's the proposed. Again, the LED lights would be much lower than existing. To the top of the can antenna would be 33 feet, so a significant drop from what's existing. All the new poles would be located in the same spot. Again, only this pole, one out of four, would have the cellular equipment. The balance of them will be simply new light poles for the parking lot based at 24 feet. They are LED. Staff sees this certainly as a benefit to the surrounding area for their cellular reception, but also the aesthetics of bringing those four poles down. Again, they're significant in height. The cell equipment will be visible, but not to the extent that it is now. And again, we're only dealing with a max height of 33 feet on one of those poles rather than the four existing. This is a very close-up of the green space on the north side of Jimmy John's. This is an image of the cabinet. I believe that was included in your packet. It is 39 inches tall, mounted on a, I believe, a nine-inch concrete slab, 29 feet wide, so very small, nondescript. It will be screened with landscaping wrapped around the sides so that it is screened from vehicles coming around the side of the building. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this application's very straightforward. Staff is supportive of it. Staff has not recommended any conditions, but certainly open for discussion, and we do have a representative with Buell Consulting in representing Verizon if there are questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slaney. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Just have a couple.
Go ahead, Commissioner Benke.
Chris, I'm just wondering here with, this used to be one large strip mall and all the light, all one height. They saw off the, or I guess there was a different parcel that became the Walgreens. They saw off the other parcel here. Is there a way that we can sort of make the lights, encourage the lights to become consistent through that area so that the visual clutter of the different height lights goes away?
We had talked about matching the heights, but in this situation, because we're only dealing with four, we wanted the cell equipment to be as low as possible. That's where the 24 feet of the LEDs came in.
Sure. And then the only other thing I saw was, it sure seems like this cell package at the top of the tower is extremely compact.
It is.
Is this the way they're going now? I mean, we're not looking at the big arms and all that kind of stuff?
Not entirely. I don't want to speak out of turn, I'm obviously not the expert on that, on this, but it is, this is more for download speeds when you're dealing with data rather than call connections and things like that. And again, specifically within the center. The range of this is not, obviously, not as far as a 100 or 150-foot tower. This is specifically for data download speeds rather than cell connection and other things.
So in other words, we expect that we might be seeing more requests like this for areas that are, that have the concentrations that'll support it?
The technology is moving this direction for certain demands.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. We have a representative on Buell here.
If the commission asks questions for him, Rob's available.
Would you like? Okay. Okay. This application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who would like to come up and address the commission on this matter, please feel free to do so now. Okay, seeing none. Don't have any willing person to come up and address us. I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? I think it's a straightforward matter.
Agreed.
If there's no discussion, do I hear a motion?
Agreed.
Moved by Commissioner Benke to recommend to the city council approval. Seconded by Commissioner Bradrick. Any other discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passed on a 4-0 vote, and for the representatives, this matter will go to the city council meeting on Tuesday, March 3rd. Good luck. Our next item on the agenda is item four, another public hearing. An application for Dakota Partnership for a conditional use permit and variance to remodel an existing building and the site for a freestanding Subway restaurant with a drive-through at 2900 Cliff Road East. Yes, ma'am? Oreo?
Good, thank you.
Aye.
Good evening, Ms. Gerrels.
Good evening, Commissioners. The application before you this evening is a site redevelopment of an existing site. Building has been vacant for a little bit over a year. We're looking at two separate applications tied together for this project. Conditional use permit is needed for a freestanding restaurant and then also to allow speakers, which are associated with the menu board, if you will, for Subway, to allow a speaker system at the site because there's adjacent residential. There are three variances that are requested to make this project go through, and I will discuss those a little bit further in a couple of minutes. This is an overview of the subject site. What I'd like to call the attention of the planning commissioners to is, there is currently an access to the south directly to Cliff Road. Cliff Road is a county road. It's a principal arterial, very busy, busy road, and there is access here. There's also an access to the apartment complex, from the apartment complex, within relatively close proximity just to the east. There is also an existing, oops, I get this mouse here going, existing access here right off of River Hills Drive, which is a city street, and the site is already developed. There's an existing pylon sign to the south that is proposed to remain as is, just a face changeout from Red Hawk Liquor to Subway. And then we have the existing building in this location. There is also an attached shed-type structure in this location, which has been used in the past for storage and refuse materials. This is proposed to be removed as part of this development project. The other site conditions I'd just like the planning commission to be aware of is there are existing trees both on the property and then along the north property line. The majority of these trees are on the apartment property to the north. There are a couple of trees in this location which are proposed to be removed with this The lot survey, just again, very briefly, shows existing conditions. One thing I want to note is there is an existing electrical transformer. This electrical box is in this location, does connect to electric underground along Cliff As far as the project itself, we're looking at a number of site improvements taking place on the property. Number one is the removal of that shed in this location, and the applicant is actually proposing to construct a freestanding trash enclosure structure, which is something that is a requirement for this zoning district. This is in the B2 neighborhood business zoning district. The adjacent property to the east and north is high-density residential. The property across the street to the west and property to the south is all B2 or B2 planned unit development. In addition, what is proposed is a drive-through for the restaurant in this location here. The applicant currently owns a Subway that's located within the shopping center just to the south of the site across the street, and they are seeking to relocate to this site so that they are able to put in the drive-through, which they believe will benefit their business. So what they're proposing to do is basically to remove this outbuilding here that was attached, put the drive-through along to the north, and there will be a new exit. This will be a one-way exit direction onto River Hills Drive, and it's proposed to be posted as one-way as well. The new service center or where they actually pick up through the drive-through window will be on the north side of the building here, and the sign for the menu board will be approximately in this location on the site. What they are proposing to do is to install curb and gutter around the entire facility. There is existing curb, some of which will be removed as part of the project, again, taking out the Cliff Road access. They are proposing to install additional pavement in this location for angled parking. The proposal would include also, again, just a north direction and exit out to the site, and the pavement and signage will be installed appropriately. The property itself was platted in the mid-1960s. The existing building and site really has been in place since approximately 1978, was built initially as a 7-Eleven, and that then was changed in 1979 for Dakota Liquors, where they received a conditional use permit, basically to transfer their liquor license from another location into the city to this site. And Dakota Liquors has operated out of it since up to about a year ago. The conditional use permit application, the reason that we have that in this B2 zone for freestanding restaurants is to evaluate impacts to adjacent properties from the proposed use, which would be a freestanding restaurant. What the applicant has done is they have worked with staff, and they are closing this access, which staff feels is a large benefit to the site. It removes an existing access, which helps to eliminate access points along the principal arterial. That is something that's an objective of both Dakota County and the city and our transportation component of our comprehensive plan. They are showing the drive-through having stacking availability for up to eight vehicles. The ordinance requires six vehicles stacking, so they are able to provide that. They also are showing extended planter islands in this location and then also on the east side. These will be landscaped along with additional landscaping proposed on both sides of the building and a little bit wrapping around in front. And then in addition to that, the angled parking that we discussed, and a small landscaped parking island in this location. As I said, the sign is proposed to remain, and that is something that the applicant is able to do. The variances that are requested for this application are from the minimum lot size standard. The ordinance requires a minimum of 1.5 acres of land for a freestanding restaurant. So what we did is to work with the applicant, and they were able to provide a site plan that provides for all of the other requirements of the ordinance in terms of, they do meet their parking requirement, they do meet the stacking requirement, they do meet overall green space requirements. So they were able to actually develop this site, even though it's a little more than half the size, or less than half the size, of the minimum requirement. They were able to show a plan that is workable in terms of circulation and site development. The second setback variance that they're looking for, second variance, is in this location. The proposed trash enclosure is proposed to be 20 feet from the east lot line. When you have residential adjacent to business, the setback changes from 10 feet to 30 feet. So they are requesting basically a 10-foot sideyard variance to allow this setback to be 20 feet instead of 30 in this location. Again, I just want to bring your attention, we do have this existing transformer building, which is about four feet high. It's a metal structure at approximately the same setback. The last variance that they are requesting is in regard to green space within the internal parking lot area. The ordinance for the B2 districts requires 8%. There's currently 0%, and they are proposing with these planter islands and the plantings in these locations to bring that from 0% to 5% green space. So they're requesting a variance for 3%, but they are significantly improving the site in terms of that standard for the ordinance. The site plan also calls for a two-foot retaining wall to be constructed on the north side, and this is basically to allow for the drive-through to be installed in this location. The trees that are shown up here are existing trees, and they are actually, as I indicated, trees that were installed by the apartments. The site is a corner lot, and in business districts for corner lots, the way that the zoning ordinance treats them is it says that there will be a front yard on each street face. So we've got two front yards, the west and the south, and then the other two yards become basically sideyard setbacks. The issue that we have is that when you look at this existing building, it was placed fairly far to the north on the site, and they have a fairly large, had a fairly large parking area, which at one point in time, I believe, had fuel dispensers for 7-Eleven early on in the 90s. This large parking area that they had, and because they moved this building back, there are restrictions in addition to the setbacks that apply to the lot in that you can't have an accessory building located in front of or closer to the street than the front of the building. So that limits our ability, or the ability for the trash enclosure building to be located basically to the north of this line and then to the east of a line, oh, I'm sorry, east of a line from the building site. When you look at trying to locate an accessory structure and meet those 30-foot setbacks, the 30-foot side setback also applies to the north lot line. There really is not a location that's available to do this without a variance, so they are In terms of variance applications, we do have a variance guideline policy, which is attached to your agenda packet, and this is not to say that how this comes out, whether that's recommending approval or denial. It's just a way to evaluate variance applications. And of the 19 criteria for variance, staff identified that this has 12 positive criteria that it meets, two negatives, and five not applicable. And most of those criteria that are not applicable are related to Shoreland districts, and this property is not in a Shoreland district. Terms of building materials and architecture, again, we have an existing building. There is an existing brown metal canopy located on the south front of the building, and then basically the entire building is a brick structure. The proposal is to enhance the building in a number of ways. Number one, they are going to remove that metal parapet and to install instead a new raised parapet on the south side. Here on the east elevation, you can see that this is raised. This will be of an ephesus or stucco-type material, light tan in color, very similar to other Subways, restaurants that you've seen in the community. The south will be the main entrance. They're proposing signage only on the south front in this location. The only other signage that is proposed is the reader board sign and then some small Subway signage just on the small canopy structure above the reader board. The new, this new material will actually also be located on the east and west sides of the building, and at the very bottom here, it will wrap around to the north side of the building, but just a few feet in either location. Other improvements are, I'll draw your attention to the left side, excuse me, the right side drawing here. The applicant is proposing to install a new door and these three sets of windows to create the second front face, if you will, on the west side of the building. That is a significant improvement. In addition, they are proposing black metal material to screen the existing equipment on the rooftop. They would only be required to paint that, so that is another improvement above and beyond the ordinance. And then on the north side of the building, again, this is where they're proposing the window for where they actually receive the food and make payment. In terms of lighting for this site, really not much changes. There are some wall pack lights that are proposed on the north side of the building and above the entry doors located on both the east and west side. In addition to that, there are two existing light posts within the parking lot. One is proposed to be just relocated, otherwise there will be no changes. All of the lighting conforms to the ordinance requirements in terms of the photometrics and the design of the light fixtures. The proposal for the floor plan in the building, the existing floor plan, basically, there's not much in there. This will be basically gutted. This shows on the west side the new entrance and window banks. On the south, they are actually proposing to close this existing doorway, so there'll be just one main doorway on the south. And again, this part of the structure, that attached shed, will be removed. The proposed floor plan is fairly similar to any other Subway. We've got the, primarily the food preparation areas in through here for customers, seating in the southerly part of the restaurant, and then mechanical and storage. For the landscape plan, this is a little bit difficult to see on the plan sheet, but they are doing actually a substantial amount of landscaping on-site. They're proposing to plant evergreen and deciduous trees along the east and north lot lines where there are openings in the landscaping on the multifamily sites. When you have a business district, a budding multifamily residential district, both sites are responsible for screening along those common property lines. In addition to that, there will be a short hedge that's proposed along the south part of the parking lot and also in this location. That hedge will be between three and four feet. That's a requirement of the ordinance anytime you've got a parking lot with six or more spaces. And as I indicated before, they are adding landscaping along the east and west sides of the building. They're also installing sidewalk on the east and west sides of the building. And then in addition to that, all of the landscaped areas will be irrigated, which is again, above and beyond the current conditions. For the pylon sign, again, it's a little difficult to see here, they are proposing some arbor vida to be placed at the base of that pylon sign. some arbor vida to be placed at the base of that pylon sign, just to, I think, make the area look a little bit, a little bit better, more presentable. As far as the site itself, when we're considering a variance application, we do have to look at what's considered to be practical difficulties. And those are things or items that are related to the site, not necessarily to the applicant. In this case, the majority of the variances are either created by the ordinance, which was changed after the site was developed, and/or conditions from previous property owners as to the placement of the building and the lot arrangement and parking lot. With that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit and variances subject to five conditions. They're relatively minor items. Number one, that right-of-way permits be obtained for both, from Dakota County and the city, for the two accesses, one to close the access along Cliff and to add the second access on River Hills Drive. Two, a minor item, that the landscape planting schedule be modified to reflect the, we have evergreen trees, they have a six-foot minimum height standard, so we're just asking that to be modified accordingly. Three, they will need to get sign permits before they make any changes to exterior signage on the site. Four, because this is a B2 zoning district, there is a requirement in the ordinance that site lighting, exterior lighting, and any lighted signage be turned off either by 11:00 at night or when the business closes, whichever is earlier, so we added that as a condition. That applies to all B2 zoning districts. And then number five, because we do have, the subway does use paper products, cups and those types of things, we have added the condition that site grounds need to be cleaned daily to pick up any litter. That is a common recommendation for fast-food type restaurants that we've applied in other With that, I can stand for questions. And we have the applicant can address planning commission if there are any particular questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garris, for your presentation. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Corey?
Thank you, Chair. You may not know this, it may be more appropriate for the applicant, but with the lights being turned off, are subways mostly open till 11:00 or past 11:00? I'm just thinking Friday, Saturday night type of thing.
Yeah, I would leave that for the applicant to address. And again, that's, that is a standard right out of the ordinance.
Sure. Would that apply across the street where they're at now?
It depends on if that, when that was built.
Okay.
If it applies or not. It's part of the zoning ordinance, it has been for a long time, but I don't know if it goes quite as far back as that, that building.
Commissioner Bradrick?
Ms. Garris, the condition number five, the site grounds shall be cleaned daily to pick up litter, I guess I'll be honest, I don't remember that in the past, I don't remember that with like Starbucks and Chick-fil-A.
Right.
Was it in there? Am I missing that?
I didn't see it.
Oh, is that, I guess, I just didn't, can you give me a little more background on that?
Sure. In the reviews that I've worked on and also processed, it's been very common to have that as a condition. I can't speak to the other two, I didn't work on those, so I would have to refer that to Mr. Slania.
Okay. I just hadn't, I didn't recall that in the past. And I have one last question.
Go ahead.
And this is more from my education. Ms. Garris, in the past, when there's been retaining walls, we've had conditions where the retaining wall needed to have inspections and needed to have engineering in it, and is there some sort of height difference? I'm just curious why sometimes that's a condition and here it was not.
Sure.
I wasn't looking for it to be a condition, I was trying to understand the differences.
Sure. Two things. Actually, for the, for the first question related to site to be cleaned up, that applies when you've got business, right, a budding residential. And I don't believe in the Chick-fil-A and those who had residential, so I believe that that may refer to that. And that's primarily, again, a mitigating factor, just to kind of keep trash from blowing around. As far as retaining walls, yes, retaining walls that are four feet or taller are required to be engineered. And in those, we do usually place a condition so that the applicant knows that going into the process. In this case, it's limited to two feet, so there's no particular engineering associated with the retaining wall itself.
That's all. Chair, thank you for me.
I don't really have any questions for it outside of perhaps if the applicant was available.
Again, thank you, Ms. Garris, for your presentation. This application requires a public hearing. I'm now going to open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who desires to come up and address the planning commission on this application can please do so right now. Would you please mention your name and address for the records? And welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. My name is Sam Ponte. I live at 3003 Selkirk Drive in the area. I have a couple of questions, one that wasn't discussed regarding the speakers on the menu board. What is the sound level of those? And where would those speakers be located specifically to noise carrying into the neighborhoods and surrounding residential areas? And then my other question is, it's more of a, it's more of a comment. First is that I appreciate that that entrance on the westbound Cliff Road has been closed, because I think that would be dangerous for that to still be open, so I'm glad that's being closed in the traffic plan. My question is, that first entrance around the corner, is that a two-way entrance? So both in and out? And if that is two-way, that may create difficulty for that stoplight there, if people are trying to exit on the left, and there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of space there. So if, if I was to make a recommendation, I would say that exit, one would be designated an entrance, one would be designated an exit.
Okay. That's the stoplight by River Hills and Cliff?
That's correct. Yeah.
Any, any other questions you have?
That's it.
Okay, would Ms. Garris would please respond?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ponte.
Commissioners and to the, to the public, for a couple of the questions, the speakers on the menu board, I can't speak to specifically how loud they will be. The city's ordinance on sound limits to 65 decibels, which these, I feel, would be much below 65 decibels. That's a pretty, that's a pretty loud sound. These type speakers, although they are audible, won't approach that, that decibel level. I can have the applicant further address this. The speakers for, on the site plan, they will be located at approximately this point back here. So this is the north, it's on the east side of the building, further to the north. And the mitigating factors that we believe help in this situation, I'm just going to go back to the site overview, is that this site on the east side backs up to garage building for this apartment complex. The closest point, the close, from the closest window to where the side of the building is, I believe, let me address that. Is 110 feet. And then in addition to that, we do have existing mature trees that will remain in this location, and they are proposing, there's also an existing evergreen, but they are also proposing additional trees in this location. Although you can't see it on the overhead, wondering, if I have a better plan here. I guess I do not. I was hoping I had one showing further to the north. Again, just like we've got this garage building here, which will help buffer noise, what we have here is, this is the existing driveway for the apartment buildings. There is also a similar garage structure on the north side of that driveway. And again, then the single-family homes are beyond that at that point. So the closest proximity would be this 110 feet at the eastern side. And in terms of the entrances and exits, this is currently the existing exit on the, close here, yeah, I can't get the mouse here. Yeah, there, about there. This is the current access. It is actually less in width than the standard. The city engineer did review this application, they did not indicate concerns over traffic, whether it's entrance and exit. It currently can enter and exit at that location and always has been able to, even as a 7-Eleven. So they do feel that with the site circulation, the additional traffic that would be coming would most likely be using the drive-through access, and that will be one-way traffic and exit only on that new proposed northerly access. With that, I don't know if Sarah has any information related to access and setback, but we did not find a need to restrict that for this use.
I think I would agree with Mr. Garris that having the two will help with that, especially with the one being the exit that's dedicated strictly to the drive-through. So yeah, no concerns.
Thank you.
Mr. Ponte, you've heard the explanation from staff. I hope that, you know, helped to mitigate any concern that you had. You want, come on.
I don't know if this is the appropriate venue for this, this comment, but if Dakota County could put a designated turn lane for that corner, that would be appreciated in that area.
Turn lane, turn lane from Cliff or from River?
If you're going westbound on Cliff Road.
Yep.
To designate a turn lane there, instead of, I know a lot of people use the shoulder through there because of how busy traffic is. And if there are subway customers, increased traffic going that direction, it would be a safer corner. So if that's at all possible, when talking to Dakota County about their traffic plans and proposals, I know that there's some other areas along Cliff Road that have designated turn lanes through there, so.
I would, I would think that staff would take that under advisement in their discussions with Dakota County. They will, I'm sure they will bring that to their attention.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ponte, thanks for coming. Any other member of the audience would like to come up and address the commission on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to commissioners. Commissioner Benke?
Thank you. Do we know how much too small the drive, how much smaller than standard, or what's average the driveway is now?
I believe it's 22 feet, and the standard is, minimum is 24. It's not that much smaller.
I guess looking at the overall, it does look like the garages of the adjacent structures do a really good job of buffering this. When I first saw it, I was really, I completely forgot that the garages to the north were there. And I was expecting to hear from the single-family homeowners that are right there, but I do see that this has done a very good job of converting a convenience store into a, into a restaurant. And I really wanted to commend the landowner, the applicant, for continuing to put his faith in this corner. He started in the other end of the building across the street in a very small space, and it's been slowly expanding until here. I think it's really much, quite the improvement.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke.
Even with the variances.
Any other comments? Commissioner Corey?
I would, I would just agree with Commissioner Benke. And I think, the way it looks, and I may be off, looks like the trash enclosure would also be somewhat of a buffer, I would, it looks like it's a brick structure in nature, and it's going to take up some more of that space as another, I think, buffer to a certain extent, even from the car traffic and stuff. From what they have to work with, I don't know how they could basically make it any better, was my thought on this, so I would support it.
I agree, I agree with commissioners that both staff and the applicant be complimented for doing a wonderful job to make something out of this, to make it into a restaurant, accessible restaurant, I think was a great accomplishment, and I'd like to commend both staff and the applicant.
Could we have the applicant come up for a minute?
You would like?
Yeah.
Okay. Can the applicant please come on up? I think commissioners would like to probably ask a few questions. Please give your name and address for the records.
Brian Thielen, 1259 Fairmount Avenue, St. Paul. And this is Sean Berry, the architect, NAI architects.
4961 Hemet Drive North, Hugo.
I just wanted to make, I always ask, of the five conditions that were outlined in our background, did you have any issues or concerns based around the conditions?
No, in fact, picking up garbage, that should be done several times throughout the day, so.
I always just like to ask if the applicant has any questions about any of the conditions that were listed, so we, I thank you for reinvesting in the, in the city of Burnsville.
Good. And then if I could make one additional comment.
Go ahead.
Concerning the public, to understand that this is a new drive-up system, it's, it's like going up to a cash machine, so there's, it's just, you're pushing the screen for each, for your order. So the only, only reason for the speakers for sort of a failsafe, if someone's having problems with it, it's more like an intercom, hey, you know, I'm having trouble here. But it's, it's really just a self-ordering system, so there shouldn't be any very, very minimal, you know.
I pulled in there Sunday and kind of poked around, and, you know, I think it's quite a little ways. Sometimes I have a hard time hearing the speakers when I'm in the car. And so I, I doubt if, I, if that's given its proximity, I kind of poked around there and I thought, I can't see that being an issue.
Okay. Commissioner Benke?
How much are you expanding to move over here now? Are you doubling your space, or?
Space-wise, you know, it's, it's almost the same, we're just using the space a lot more efficiently. Yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming up. Any other comments? Since there's none, do I hear a motion?
I would make a motion.
Motion.
I would recommend that the planning, I would, I would like to make a motion, the planning commission recommend the city council approval of the CUP and the variance application subject to the five conditions listed in our background.
Motion move by Commissioner Bradrick.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Benke. Any other discussion? If none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? None, motion passed 4-0. This will go to the city council. This will go to the city council at the regular meeting on February, March 3rd, sorry, March 3rd. Okay? And again, thank you for coming and for the hard work you have done.
Thank you.
To bring this to us and to really work closely with staff. Our next item on the agenda is another public hearing. Application for First Industrial LP for preliminary and final plat of a one-lot industrial subdivision of First Industrial Edition and a conditional use permit to allow retail sales in excess of 1,000 square feet at 2,300 West Highway 13. Mr. Slenia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Again, this is a public hearing. It is a conditional use permit. With this application, our discussion is going to be more focused on land use rather than exterior improvements or exterior changes to the building, slightly different than the last few applications the, the commission has reviewed. The tenant, Shop Jimmy, is one of the tenants within the existing building. He is not the property owner. The property owner is First Industrial LP. The conditional use permit is a request within our industrial districts to allow accessory retail sales when they, when this space breaks 1,000 square feet. There are some other size limitations on that, but that's the vent, general basics of it. The site is zoned Gih, which is Gateway Industrial Heavy. All the surrounding property owners are also zoned Gih. They are designated as Minnesota River Quadrant in the comprehensive plan. The proposal is for conversion of 12,000 square feet of existing office and conference room space into retail space. So let me just, while I've got this image up, let me get into some of the details. Again, this is the site. This is the south end of the building. This area is office, conference rooms, soon to be retail. It is, got locker rooms, exercise area, break room, and so forth for the employees. There are loading docks on this end of the south side of the building. The balance of the building is warehouse. As I indicated in the report, it's a very large building, 400,000 square feet in size. The first part of the request is the planting of the property. It exists as meets and bounds now to process the conditional use permit needed for the retail sales. A plant was also needed. Based on building code and city code, we needed to plant the property first or as part of the application. The plant is very basic. It's a one-lot subdivision. The site meets the minimum lot width, minimum size, and easement requirements. Now we'll get into the details of the retail space. So the top left is an image of the existing building. Again, this is, Highway 13 is out here. This is the office conference room area. The locker rooms were in here, the break room and so forth. These were the loading docks. Again, the balance of the site in the back. There are one or two other tenants within the building. There's actually a vacant warehouse space in there right now that is unutilized. What we're looking at is this area right here, specifically this corner of the building. What you see on the right is a close-up of that area. So there are entrances at this point and at this point. This right now is office. The applicant is converting this area to the retail portion. The main entrance will be right here. As I indicated in the report, there would be a change to the signage. These are broken out into different things, audio visual, audio visual, tool display. What's important to note, although there is a name change, the use is still accessory to the Shop Jimmy warehouse, as that is their, their storage area, that is their loading and unloading. There is a, I believe it's 12 feet wide overhead door proposed in this area that connects it to the Shop Jimmy warehouse. Without, without Shop Jimmy as an adjacent neighbor or adjacent tenant, the Minnesota outlet can't function. They don't have direct access to the loading areas. They don't have storage for their equipment and so forth. As indicated in the report, they are, they're dealing with return items, overstock, closeouts from large home improvement big-box stores. So it is a, a fluctuating inventory of what they have available. They've indicated home appliances, garden equipment, lawn and garden tools, building materials, any and all of that that, that's available through their big-box supplier. Within the conditional use permit requirements, again, as I indicated, once you break 1,000 square feet, you need the conditional use permit. There's also a limit that the retail area not exceed 20% of this tenant's space. Based on Shop Jimmy's overall warehouse and occupancy of this building, the applicant's only at 4%. It is 12,000 square feet in size, granted, but it is such a large building, such a large operation. Really, commissioners, the last thing I wanted to touch on was the parking situation. There are 144 stalls onsite currently, striped onsite. Again, this is the area right here. This is office employees, warehouse employees, as well as future customer parking. Again, it, when looking at the numbers and running the numbers for such a large building, they are underparked. However, when dealing with retail, you're looking at evening and weekend uses. The Shop Jimmy employees are not onsite on Saturdays and Sundays. And they are only operating at 80 employees. So it still provides a surplus of parking when dealing with the, the reality of, of what's available. Staff is supportive of this parking situation. We're trying to avoid adding hard surface, unneeded hard surface to sites. And again, we're dealing in more of a destination retail situation rather than Canal Road 42 or other parts of town where you are possibly stopping at multiple sites in one trip or coming across shops by happenstance. The last item and one of the conditions in, in the report was this area on the far north end of the site. It's currently dirt gravel. It had been used at one time for parking and drive areas. It is calculated in that 20% green space. It's currently not vegetated. Staff's recommending that that area be removed of gravel and reseeded, whether it's for turf grass to be mowed or just a native vegetation that can be left unkept. By ordinance, parking and drive aisles are supposed to be improved, either gravel, concrete, excuse me, bituminous or concrete. Staff feels that would be a benefit to the application. Other than the signage proposed, there are no other exterior improvements proposed. Again, it is a, a land use discussion that is to the planning commission tonight. Staff is recommending approval with the three conditions. The applicant is here. Should you have questions, I'll, I'll stand for questions you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Slenia. Commissioners? Commissioner Corey?
Just out of curiosity, when figuring the parking space requirement, do you calculate based on the 12,000 square feet of the retail or the whole area that they own or renting, I should say?
The, the whole area. I added up all the different land uses, so the office, the retail, and the warehouse.
Because I'm just guessing that if it was just a 12,000 square foot retail, the parking requirements would be significantly less or some less?
Correct. Correct. And not, that calculation was not just the Shop Jimmy space. That was the unoccupied warehouse. That was the whole building.
Oh, okay. So even the percentage that's not being used at this?
Correct.
Okay.
We, we just want to have a handle on that, so if the space gets filled up in the future, we don't back ourselves into a parking problem.
If, sort of along that lines, the area that, that we have the condition on which they could plant or ask, actually add some bituminous or concrete to park in the back, if for instance it filled up, would that seem to be an alternative at that point, if push comes to shove type of thing?
Staff viewed that as an option. It would, something we'd have to address with the property owner because of access into the back. I believe those are all raised entries, so there's no at-grade handicap accessibility and so forth. Certainly you could, you could get parking spaces back there, and if employees were going directly into the warehouse space, I think that would work. There's certainly no shortage of hard surface on the site.
I guess that's kind of what I was thinking, is if it looked like from the one schematic that the part of the back warehouse wasn't being used, and if, if that was leased or whatever, then you would put park, could put parking back there, which would be a lot closer.
Correct. There are, there are doors exiting the building, and if parking becomes a problem, I think we have options there.
Okay. That's what I was thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Corey. Commissioner Benke?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of touch on that, too. I think it's pretty safe to say, Chris, that a lot of the parking requirements have come from the ordinance for decades.
Correct.
They really haven't changed. They haven't. And what we're doing here is we're looking at how the use is functioning on a daily-to-date basis.
Correct.
But with that in mind, if the use of the building increases, becomes more intense, we do have ways of making sure that we've got enough parking on site.
Correct.
I guess I'm bringing that up because I did notice in the condition that it does appear that we're currently limiting the retail area according to this condition to 12,000 square feet. But it does seem to allow for future increase to the retail area over 10% of the square footage, which would basically allow them to almost quadruple their space without amending this conditional use.
And let me, let me clarify that. Commissioners, the, the 10% is just based on the 12,000 square feet, not the...
Okay, so this is, okay, so the, the retail area could increase 100, 1,200 square feet.
Correct.
And then we're, okay, so it's not 10% of the entire building?
Correct.
Okay. That helps.
That just gives staff some flexibility if, if things are going well, if it's a substantial increase, then we, we should relook at this.
The only other question I have is when you're talking about the plat and how we were converting it, are we good with all of our setbacks on the side lot lines and things? Then you didn't mention that.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. Commissioners, there is one, one non-conformity, and that is, I'll just jump back. Again, this is the frontage road, Highway 13. There are 20, I want to think, 26, somewhere in that area. Parking stalls right here that happen to be crossing the, the lot line. That doesn't change whether it's platted or not. Those are non-conforming stalls. The applicant isn't aware of any easements. Staff isn't concerned with that. It will remain a non-conformity until substantial redevelopment would occur.
Are there issues with the adjacent landowner?
No.
Okay. They probably should do something to legitimize it, though.
That, that was brought up.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Bradrick?
The 12,000 square feet and then the 10% increase, I think we, what would we, we dealt with that like a year ago or so, I think, where we went into the industrial districts. So I have a, just from a technical question, there, to maybe ease their expansion, the 12,000 square feet, there's a fair amount of that front office space according to the new plan that they weren't going to use. They were leaving locker rooms. They were leaving some other stuff. So does the 12,000 square feet just the retail space that they were?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioners, and I, I know this is a little fuzzy, but if you follow the cursor here, here, and down here, everything on top of that, above that, is the retail.
Okay.
Everything below that line is...
So my question was to ease this. I mean, the, the 10% was also, I think, what we set in the ordinance, but if, was there a discussion that we could give them, because they could, they could increase on the 12,000 square feet, I guess was there a number that they could expand into that existing office space, not go into the warehouse, and not have to come back to us?
Anything?
Am I making sense there? I mean, we can give them a 30% increase on that 12,000 square feet. They're still enclosed in that original office space when this was a office for the hardware. Was it our own hardware?
Our own hardware, correct.
Yeah. Was there some thought process, or do they believe that that 10% increase is, is doable? And maybe the applicant can tell us that, but...
Certainly. And, and the applicant can come up, the, the 10% is, is based on a, a standard within the ordinance that gives staff the flexibility within 10% to enlarge a use without bringing it back to planning commission council. That's one aspect. The second aspect would be building and other fire code. I don't want to say problems, but right now the, our building official's okay with this. He's reviewed it. The applicant's got an architect, and we're all on the same page. As those uses shift, that may change.
We struggled with that in some buildings in this area.
Correct. Correct. So right now bathrooms exits are kosher. It would, again, it would depend what the applicant's proposing. And we can certainly ask them if, if they see expansion in the near future, we can, we can adjust that condition.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mrs. Slenia. This application requires a public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who wish to come and present to the planning commission can do so right now. As you come up, please mention your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Velcika, and my address is 20551 Hartford Way in Lakeville. I am the applicant, and the only thing I wanted to address was the first requirement that was, you know, to, to put in green space in the back. I don't, I'm not the building owner, and I don't even lease, I'm not even allowed access to that part of the lot. If you look on the, I'm not sure if you can tell, I don't know how to flip through this. On the backside of the building, trying to use my cursor here, these docks right here are ours. Otherwise, we, so we basically have semi-parking, and then that is it, that is all we have use of in this facility. Chris had mentioned that there was a vacant space right here that is actually now filled as well. So it's a, it's a single tenant, it's 120,000 square feet. They literally have two employees. It's, it's a long-term storage-type product, so there's really no use in the back, so I understand it'd be nice to make into green space, but again, I'm not the building owner, and I can't even, can't even use anything back there. So I would request that that be removed as a requirement.
Any other comments you would like to make?
No.
Okay, just that one.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, from staff standpoint, I, I understand the position the applicant's in, they, they don't, they're not the property owner. They don't have control over it. It is a, the gravel... over it. It is a, the gravel back there is a nonconformity, regardless of who the owner is or, or what the use is. It's a nonconformity that, at least from staff's perspective, is a relatively easy fix. It's not, it doesn't involve any engineering, any bituminous or any installation. From our standpoint, it is, it's a benefit to the property owner to enhance the uses in there. It's a benefit to his, to the tenants. That's why staff has that condition in there.
Commissioner Venky?
We seem to have this repeating where the tenants are the applicants, but the landowners apparently have nothing, no skin in the game, as it were. Is there a reason why we keep having that? Is there a way we can maybe change that?
I would say the property owner does have skin in the game. They, they signed the application. They agreed to go through this process.
Okay.
The plat is, the property owner needs to sign the plat to get it recorded with the Corey County. I believe the applicant's, I'm sure, paying the fees, doing the legwork, hiring the architect to get a lot of this done. But in the end, whether it's an encoded, excuse me, interior or exterior code enforcement issue or something along the lines, at the end of the day, the property owner is the responsible party. If something, I'm sure it won't happen here, but if, situation where something goes to court, if there's enforcement issues, in the end, it's the property owner in the courtroom and not the tenant.
Okay. Commissioner Corey?
Yeah, just a quick question, just so I understand how this works. Because I, sort of a double question. I assume you're, you're just leasing this area?
Yep.
Correct? So, if we, I, I don't have a problem with the condition. I just, I'm worried a little bit here that we put this in as a condition, and what happens if the property owner says, "Well, that's great condition for my tenant, but I'm the property owner, and I'm not going to do it." I mean, it puts him in a bind.
It does. It also, it also would null and void if, if the...
And the other conditions.
Yeah. If, if the property owner doesn't want to agree to this, you know, it would null and void the plat, the conditional use permit. The project stops, and basically, everybody goes back to square one where we were before.
So, it's an agreement, basically, to plot it first, plot it first?
Yes. That is part of that.
Part of the application, yeah. And that, that is a significant benefit to the property owner.
The conditional use permit also runs with the land itself.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that, too. So, basically, if, if the applicant was to move to another location somewhere down the road, the landowner, the building owner doesn't have to come back to see us to fill it again, as long as the use is the same.
As long as there's a reuse or a turnover within six months. By going through this, by having the applicant go through this, the property owner is expanding their land use rights for that building.
Right. So, he definitely has a benefit here.
And commissioners, I should say, staff was aware. The applicant was in this conundrum with the, the property owner. We discussed it multiple times. This is staff's recommendation. The, the planning commission can certainly...
I think if it's a code enforcement matter, I think I'm going to support it. The applicant needs to work at the property owner to get it done. Otherwise, even the agreement between the applicant and the property owner can be null and void.
Commissioner Slaney, recommendation one essentially applies to the landowner.
Yep.
Essentially, recommendation two, same thing?
Two.
I mean, he owns the sign that the applicant's going to put his name on, or he owns the face of the building.
Correct. Again, on a signed permit, we request that the, the property owner acknowledge that the tenant is going through this process.
And the retail area is an improvement to the existing?
To the building now.
The existing building. Okay.
Again, that condition, as Ms. Garrett said, runs with the property.
Right.
Thank you. You've heard from staff on this matter, and I would strongly suggest that you work with the owner to get this done, because if, if it's not corrected or it's not done, then even the, the agreement that you have with him is questionable.
Do you believe the landlord's not going to address this issue?
I'm not sure, just because of the, just because the, the nature of, you know, it being a large warehouse. I don't know what city code is on this, but, you know, gravel is a nice area to park trailers if you do have a lot of incoming loads and things like that. So, I don't know what their take would be on it. There is a lot of traffic that, you know, a lot of semi-traffic going in and out of there in the back part of the warehouse. So, not a lot of long-term storage, but I believe they, in the past, have leased that, that area as outdoor storage. So...
Interesting.
Don't know if that's okay, but...
For me.
You didn't hear it from me?
Quite honestly, I think everything you just said is why it is like it is. And it expanded by virtue of use as opposed to being planned to be done that way.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're still in the public hearing. If there's any other person who would like to come up? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Chair, I'm, I mean, I support this. I, I think it's a, I think it's a great addition. I don't have any problems with it. Other, you know, at all, I even, I mean, agree that they, part of that back part portion should be made into green space. That sounds like a reasonable idea. And this is, I'm just saying, this is maybe going forward in the future. It seems somehow you need to have the landowner here to have him agree to this and sort of instead of sticking this poor tenant in the middle saying, "Well, I went to the commissioners, and they said you need to put in green space," and landowner goes, "Well, yeah, that's all great, but so what? I'm not going to do it." And let me, you know, too bad. So sad. I just, some, something just sort of smacks at being not quite fair about that. You know, if this is a great benefit to the landowner to have it platted, to expand this, to have him, the tenant happy, continued use into the future, somehow I think the landowner should be here to say, "Yeah, I'm agreeing to this as well." So, that's just my two cents worth.
Thank you, Commissioner Corey. Commissioner Venky?
I agree 100% on that. I think that seeing the landowner would be a real benefit in this case. If I could, Mr. Slaney, Gateway Industrial Heavy, going forward, this area specifically for...
This, this area moving forward, commissioners, is intended for long-term industrial. The uses there are ideally what we're looking for. Every, everything stored inside, full-time jobs, office, warehouse, truck traffic, that's all consistent.
So, for going forward, the improvements to the building are a long-term benefit. It's not like they're going to go away at some point, like something over in the quadrant might.
Correct.
And actually improving the building additionally might be something the city would be very interested in, and that would go to the site as well.
Correct.
Okay.
There are, yes, there, there was a code analysis done to get, get the, the office and the retail portion up to current code.
And is the site low on green space? I think I read that somewhere.
It is with, if you count the gravel area as green space, it is above the 25%. If you count the gravel area as hard surface, it is below the 25%.
And I think as we go forward, we'll continue to see a lot of work at keeping the green space up from the runoff standpoint and other issues of rainwater and things.
Certainly. Commissioners, and again, we wouldn't have gone knocking on the property owner's door, bringing this up, but for the, the plat and the conditional use permit. You can see on the aerial, it's tough to see back there. I'm sure it was used for storage and traffic for any number of years.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other discussions, do I hear a motion?
I would, I would make a motion. Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, ma'am.
The planning commission recommends to the city council approval of plot a first industrial addition and conditional use permit to allow retail sales in excess of 1,000 square feet at 2,300 West Highway 13 with the following three conditions.
Move by Commissioner Corey? Second Commissioner Venky? Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are passed on a 4-0 vote. This matter will go to the city council meeting on Tuesday, March 3rd. Okay? And thank you and for coming and for your contributions, and good luck. Okay? Okay. Next item on the agenda is updates. Any updates, commissioners?
None, Commissioner.
Staff?
Commissioners, the only update would be the tentative agenda for your next meeting on March 9th.
Thank you. Commissioners, thank you for, for your coming and for your deliberations. Staff, same to you. To the viewing and listening public, we thank you for joining us. As you know, we work very hard to make Burnsville the best place to live, to work, to own your business, and to shop. We all live here, so we work hard to attain those goals. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Bradrick?
Second.
Second Commissioner Corey, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed on a 4-0 vote. Thank you again, and good night, everyone.